Good afternoon, welcome to Town Meeting Preview. My name's Tim Goddard, I'm your town moderator. I'm joined by our town administrator Jim Duggan. And our job is to get through the 33 articles that are on the Town Meeting Warrant on Tuesday, May the 6th, at the Charlie K Gymnasium at 7:00 PM. And to provide you with some information and some explanations as far as the Town Meeting goes. Of course, the indispensable guide that should have been mailed to your home already is the Town Meeting Report. Going to bring with them the copy of the Town Meeting Report that was mailed to your home, which contains the Finance Committee's report, and also the prospective motions and articles, background information on everything that's going to happen at Town Meeting. If you spend some time with the report, I think it may answer some questions that might come up at Town Meeting. If not, happy to answer them. So Jim, we've got 33 articles on the warrant, and some of them we already know are not going to be moved, and others will be likely on the consent agenda.
Yep.
Why don't we dive right in, if you will?
Sounds great.
And Article 1, the annual report, is an annual article where we asked Town Meeting to accept the Town's annual report. Some people think of it as kind of a show and tell opportunity to give updates on things. It's really on the warrant to accept the annual report. Number 2, I think, bills from prior years, Jim, you've told me we don't have any this year, which is good news.
No, we don't, which is great news. Typically, we'll have a couple stragglers that will transition over into a previous fiscal, from a previous fiscal year, but this year, the department heads have worked really, really hard to make sure that that didn't happen this year.
That's great, that's great. And I think the Town sometimes gets a bad rap for this one. People think, how come the Town's not paying its bills?
Right.
And it's usually a timing issue, as you know, with a vendor that didn't submit their invoice on time.
Right.
And then you have to tell them, well, I'd love to pay you, but you're going to have to wait for a Town Meeting, and we're going to have to get an eight tenths vote, and they don't want to hear it. They never do it again.
Right, no.
Once they hear that.
And it doesn't, and you know, it's funny, they have to experience it, but before, and so many times, no matter how many times you tell them upfront, from the very, very beginning, still, it comes in after July 1st, and yeah, we have to wait.
Exactly, exactly. Article 3 is the Fiscal Year 2026 Annual Operating Budget. And I think we've got Ryan teed up to go into some detail on this one, Jim. Anything you'd like to add, just for background?
Well, we worked really, we worked very, very hard over the past five or six months with the Finance Committee and the Select Board to, there was a $4 million gap that we had to close in order to provide a balanced budget for this year. And there was a lot of, a lot of hard work by the team, by the finance team, the staff, the staff members. Ryan did a great job. And this is a lot of, a lot of work that has finally come to fruition.
Very good. Well, let's toss it over to Ryan.
All right. Thank you, Tim and James. My name is Ryan Ferrara. I am the Assistant Town Administrator here in Littleton. I'm also the Finance Director as well. So I'm going to walk you through now Article, on Article 3, which is our Fiscal Year 26 Proposed Budget. It's our operating budget. And we're also going to talk a little bit about some other capital-related articles in the Town Meeting Warrant, which you'll be reviewing over the next few weeks, and meeting with and voting on at your May 6th, 2025 Annual Town Meeting. So we start our process, it's usually about a five-month process for budgeting. We begin this back, back in October of 2024, where we begin our calculations, but also begin to reach out to our departments with getting, getting updates from them and talking to them about their needs. We begin first with our Fiscal Year 25 Levy Limit. That's $51 million, roughly speaking. We then add on our Proposition 2.5 Levy Increase. Many of you probably heard of Proposition 2.5, probably in terms of overrides, but part of that is that it basically limits us every year as to how much we can increase our budget. It's formulaic and limited to 2.5%. We also have the capacity to add new growth. And new growth is in essence, new development in town, and reflects the tax income that we anticipate will be coming in from that development. Finally, we have debt exclusions. Debt exclusions are votes that Town Meeting, and more specifically, the voters have taken to approve of debt service and debt-related costs for projects that fall outside of the Proposition 2.5 Levy, and that's $900,000. So with that, we have a total tax levy of just over $54 million. So talked a little bit about new growth before, but new growth is, just to let everybody know what that is, it's the addition of tax revenue generated by new construction, renovations, and other increases in the property tax base during a calendar year. Of note, it does not include value increases caused by normal market forces or revaluations of property. So if your, if your value of your house goes up, that isn't considered to be part of new growth. So in that calculation, that typically is done by our Assessors Department, we anticipate new growth of just about $511,000. Excluded debt, as we talked about before, is previous action taken by a community via a referendum. First, the first vote takes place typically at Town Meeting to allow for there to be debt, that's typically a two-thirds vote. And then there needs to be a majority vote at the ballot box to approve of the actual override. So in this instance, we have a total of about, about $1.1 million in excluded debt, but we also are taking money out of our Debt Stabilization Fund, roughly about $242,000, to reduce the overall obligation to the taxpayer to $900,000. And this is something that money's been set aside, you know, inside the levy to pay for costs that are outside of the levy. And it's a regular part of the plan that the Finance Committee and Select Board have put in place via our fiscal policies. So to determine our Fiscal Year 26 calculation, we take our total tax levy of roughly $54 million. We have other funds, this is typically revenue that we receive via free cash contributions, state aid, and local receipts such as meals tax or motel tax, to a total revenue of $75.3 So one of the great things about being in Littleton that I hope all residents understand is to, is that we have a outstanding Finance Committee. And with that Finance Committee, they have developed and worked cooperatively with the Select Board in developing a financial management policy. So one of the key tenants of that policy is that every year when we come into the budget, we take our operating budget, in this case, a proposed fiscal year 26 operating budget of $64.1 million, and take 2.5% of that and basically say that that is, that is the amount, or 1.6 million, that we can dedicate to capital projects. Capital projects are typically projects that have a value of over $5,000 and have a useful life of 10 years or longer. So we have capital needs as well as operating budget needs in, you know, when we come in every year with our budget process. So as I mentioned earlier, our capital, our budget process takes roughly about five months. We started back in October with guidelines that we provided to our department heads, and gave them a deadline to get back to us with their proposed budgets by November 4th of 2024. The direction we gave to our departments was to provide level service budgets. So basically, that our, our hope and our plan was to basically say to them, you would be, you know, tell us what the cost would be to provide the same level of service that you did, or that you have been doing in the current fiscal year, in fiscal year 2025, in 2026. So after all those submittals were provided, we started this process with a $4.1 million deficit. So we had our work cut out for us. So when we talk about primary factors as to what has led to that deficit, first piece is we've got Year 1 Debt Service in the center in Shattuck Street. Just to let everybody know who's watching, our ribbon cutting is scheduled for May, Friday, May 16th at 1:00 PM. For those of you who haven't had a chance to see the project, I recommend coming by after that, after that ribbon cutting ceremony, or coming to the ribbon cutting ceremony to see the facility. It's really impressive. But as with any new construction, you also have to pay the bill. And so this is one factor that we have to, have to plan for and, you know, take into consideration when we put our budgets together. The other piece is that Town of Littleton is currently the only, only user of the new source system. So that new source system is coming along. There is two separate projects associated with that. There's the collection system, and then there's the treatment plant. The anticipation is that that should be, work should be completed sometime in upcoming summer to fall of 2025. But there are new costs. That $1.4 million represents our incremental increase from fiscal year 25 to 26 in terms of the Town's obligation. Now, over the long term, as more users come onto the system, the monies that the Town has put in and essentially prepaid will come back to us, probably via rates, and so we anticipate that. But right now, we as the sole, sole user of the system have a larger and outsized obligation at this time. So just combining those two elements alone, that's $3 million. So basically, 75% of what we were looking at for our deficit. So our finance team internally, after the budgets were proposed and provided to us, met with larger departments and other departments requesting substantial changes in their budget. So our goal was to recommend adjustments to departmental budgets, and as well as their capital budgets and the operating budgets, to basically present to Town Meeting a balanced budget. And so we were able to do that, and the proposed 2026 budget was released to the Finance Committee and Select Board on December 31st, 2024. That document is currently up on our website if anyone is interested in looking at it. So our capital budget, it's a free cash spending on that is based on that formulaic target of, that we referred to before. We have about 1.6 million available in capital spending. And after that process, we also have an operating budget. It's a balanced budget for you to be reviewing. It took a lot of changes and adjustments, but we've got a great financial team here, a lot of back and forth with our departments, but I think a really responsible, a really responsible and thorough process on our end to get that and present that to the Select Board and Finance Committee. So in terms of things that I'd like to call out for you to be aware of, first is, we updated our fiscal policy, and we were able to do that with a combined effort of the Select Board, Finance Committee, and School Committee to develop a debt exclusion override management plan. And that was for the Shaker Lane School and DPW facility. The purpose behind this effort was to recognize that this upcoming fall, I believe it's late October, is when the special Town Meeting will be taking place. The Town will be asked, specifically at Town Meeting, to agree to a debt service exclusion vote, which is otherwise known as a Proposition 2.5 override vote, at Town, at Town Meeting, and more specifically, the Saturday after that, there will be a vote to hopefully be able to endorse that proposal. So there's going to be a lot of effort and time that we make to explain this to Town Meeting, including, I would note, a session that takes place just before Town Meeting at 6:00 PM in the middle school cafeteria. So all, so all residents are welcome to come to that session, learn some more about the Shaker Lane School MSBA project. So, but the, this, the idea of this is to plan to come back to you back in the fall, both at Town Meeting for two-thirds vote for the debt exclusion, and then separately for, right after that, at the, at the ballot for the actual override vote. So that is the current plan that we have before you. So with that, and so with this change in the policy, and why this was important, it committed the School Committee, Finance Committee, and Select Board to some activities. Specifically, the School Committee is committing to fund its own capital projects through their own budget. So in doing so, in FY '26, we avoided capital expenses of $280,000. Additionally, our financial management policy said we could spend up to $1.6 million in capital projects, but we only are asking Town Meeting to spend $825,558, leaving us $777,821 to apply those funds to the School Building Stabilization Fund. So our goal of, again, both the Select Board, Finance Committee, and, and the School Committee is to seek to add funding, or as much funding as we can, to the School Building Stabilization Fund in support of the Shaker Lane School project. So you'll note in Article 21, we're contributing close to $2 million to that fund that was established about a year ago. So with that increase, we think that, we're anticipating at the end of fiscal year 2026, there'll be a $3.2 million balance in that account. So as part of the policy goal, we wanted to fund that at a minimum of $6 million. So we're only two years into this process, and we already are well past, you know, half of that goal, which is, I think, you know, a really important thing for the Town as we begin to plan for the Shaker Lane School. Would also note that we're also planning for potentially a new DPW facility. So the policy also committed to fund a debt exclusion stabilization account, or the debt exclusion stabilization account, at $500,000 annually from fiscal year 2029 to fiscal year 2043, to help offset what the cost would be for a new DPW facility. And we anticipate that too would be a debt exclusion vote at some point in the future, but we're still in the earlier stages of that DPW feasibility need. So we are still working on that, the school project, the Shaker Lane School project's further along than that, but we know that, you know, that it's coming. And so this is all part of the planning that we put in place to, you know, to pre-fund some of those components that we know are coming down the line. So in terms of the actual projects that you'll be seeing, capital projects that you're going to be seeing requesting funding, this is all going to be taking place under Article 8. And let's go through and take a look at what some of those are. So first thing is a new voting machines to the Town Clerk's Office. They're having a hard time finding replacement parts, and they've sort of strung this together over 24 years, but that, those voting machines are becoming more obsolete, and clearly they need to replace that. Next piece is $350,000 for replacing a 1993 catch basin cleaner. For those of you who might see this on the road, this is, this is a larger-scale truck that has a, what they call a clamshell, kind of grabber, if you will. Looks a little like those machines you see in bowling alleys when you're trying to pick out toys. But this is a much more stronger, a much stronger piece of equipment that helps clean out our catch basins and make sure that our stormwater flows in the correct places. Next thing, DPW is proposing a replacement of a 2012 Ford F-450, kind of reaching the end of its useful life. And the last item for DPW is the installation of a compactor, which compactors help allow us to, to shrink what, or actually add capacity in our dumpsters that we then bring, we then drive to our disposal places, I think primarily there in Fitchburg right now. For the Fire Department, they're asking for above $46,000 for the replacement of chainsaws, cutoff saws, and the jaws of life. So they're looking to change over from gas-powered units to hydraulic-powered units, and this is part of that effort to modernize their equipment fleet. Fire is also asking for $18,000 for making improvements at their training tower. For police, they're asking for $160,000 to replace two vehicles for their cruiser replacement plan. They typically are asked for this money every year because, you know, as the police use these vehicles, it's a 24, 24-hour, seven-days-a-week need, so those vehicles get a lot of use, and a lot of, and a lot of hard use. So they need to be cycled out on a regular basis. Police are also requesting $35,000 to replace their ballistic vests. There is a, you know, life expectancy of five years on those vests, and they need to be replaced. Police are proposing also $20,000 for improvements to their parking lot to extend the useful life of that parking lot through seal coating and line striping. And finally, the Parks Recreation and Community Education Department is seeking about $25,000 for additional funding from a prior allocation so that they can purchase a 12-passenger van or school bus. So also on top of those requests, we have a separate request under Article 20 for $1.3 million for a transfer from the Capital Stabilization Fund to purchase and equip a replacement for Engine 1. So in, we project in, at the end of fiscal year 26, the balance in the Capital Stabilization Fund will be about $6.2 million, including that 1.3 decrease or withdrawal from the fund. The reason why, you know, we're able to do a lot of the things that we do is that we continue to save in such accounts as our Capital Stabilization Fund to meet our long-term needs. I would also note that our 10-year capital plan's been updated to reflect the replacement of Engine 2, and that will be in fiscal year 2027 that we'll likely see that. And that is at about $1.4 million. It's a little bit more to address some of the equipment we're going to need on that, as well as the inflation that we're seeing, which is on, on the purchase of fire vehicles, which has been very, very high as of late. So we are coming to you in Town Meeting with Article 3, with a balanced budget and a Town, a total Town expenditure of $75,257,229. So you'll see, this is the table, that on the upper section outlines our revenue of, that's 75 million I mentioned, and then the breakdown underneath that of our operating expenses. So the thing to highlight this is the yellow circle, which shows a net budget variance of $0. So we're maybe a little bit behind where we were in FY '25, where we were ahead of the game by about $54,000. But what's being presented to you is a balanced budget and one that will not require any override of any sort. So that essentially concludes my presentation to you regarding Article 3, as well as some of the other capital-related articles that you'll see at the, at your annual Town Meeting. I would like to note too, that this is, this is my, my final Town Meeting. I have given my notice, and this will be my, be moving on for another community. So I just wanted to express my sincere thanks to my Select Board, as well as my finance team and the Town Administrator's Office as well. The effort that you see before you to come up with, come up with this document is really a team effort, and takes a lot of time to put together, but we always do so in mind with respect for the residents and the knowledge that this is your tax money at, at work. And we always want to do so in an efficient and purposeful way. So I can only say to you that I'm leaving you in great hands here with our team, again, the finance team, and with the Town Administrator's Office. I've been very fortunate to be here over the last nearly three years, and just wanted to, again, express my thanks to the team here in Town Hall, as well as to you, the residents, for your support over the last three years and making this the great community that it is. So my thanks to you, and I wish nothing but the best for the Town of Littleton. So thank you.
All right. Thank you, Ryan, for that explanation of the financial articles and the operating budget. And now that moves us down, the, the list in the warrant to Article 12, to authorize the surplus of Littleton Town Hall for the development of rental affordable housing at 37 Shattuck Street. Jim, do you want to?
Yeah.
Handle that one?
I would, I would love it. We've got 12 and 13 are kind of, are kind of piggybacking with each other at this, at this point. So 12 is going to be amended on the floor by Town Council. There's been a lot of information gathering from what residents have expressed. Over the course, we had the community input session between the newsletter we put out, a lot of conversations from the Select Board members, the constituency had reached out to them, and also to the staff members. So we are going to amend, amend the article. Article 12 is going to be with two separate motions. In your, in your booklet, as everyone has, it's going to be separate. Section 1 is going to be for the first motion. And Section 1, in a simplified, in a simplified explanation, that just provides us the opportunity, allows us to solicit the special legislation through, through our state legislature, to go through the process. And this is, and the whole goal here is to, for the creation of deeply affordable senior rental housing. That's the, that's the goal here. It's not, it's, it's, it's really not to get a new shiny building because everyone else is having a new building. Staff would work any place. We love this building, but we really feel, it's been expressed to us, that that is a deep need within our community, and we want to make that investment in our, in our seniors. And then Motion 2 on that article is going to be within, in your, in your booklet, will be inclusive of Sections 2, 3, 4, and 5. And ultimately, it gives, it gives a number of different opportunities through that, of those areas. It allows, it allows us to come into, to create a development agreement with, with a developer, to create the deeply affordable senior housing. It also allows us the opportunity to identify and potentially look at a different location for a Town Hall. And it's also declaring the, the parcel surplus, this, this parcel surplus. So there's, there's a lot of moving parts in that area. The Select Board met on the, on these two, on this, on these issues the other night, on Monday night, and they voted unanimously on the first motion with seeking the state, the special legislation. The special legislation is the very first step of many steps that we'll be coming back and discussing with the residents, getting input, and coming back to Town Meeting at a future Town Meeting for, as the, as the project progresses in the, in the process. And in the second motion, which takes in Sections 2, 3, 4, and 5, the Select Board voted 3 in favor, 2 opposed, to support those, those areas. And it's, and that's, and there was, you know, there's areas of concern that Select Board members... select board members, select board members had, had expressed, you know, a lot of this building. There's a lot of emotional attachment to this building and, uh, which is, which is understandable. So it is going to give us the opportunity, um, while it is going through the special legislative process, which could take approximately a year, it will give us the opportunity to get all the data points and, uh, do our homework and understand feasibility studies of costs and relocation expenses and, and everything and, and look and get every type of scenario, financial scenario and impact that we would have, uh, and, and present that to the residents of the community. And, um, and during that year, there's going to be, uh, a tremendous amount of outreach efforts and communication with our residents on the progress of, of, of the information. Uh, so that's really it on, on Article twelve. And the, on also Monday for Article thirteen, the select board voted no action for Article thirteen. So it is the, it is the recommendation that no action be taken on thirteen and, uh, and that will, so the, no vote or anything like that.
So, so to sum up, uh, Jim, then there'll be two motions voted and under Article twelve.
Yep.
Related to, uh, the project.
Right.
Which kind of, uh, allows for Article thirteen to go away.
Exactly.
Because some of that is the same, you know, kind of.
Right.
Information covering the same ground.
Yep.
So.
Right.
The voters should, uh, take note of that, that there'll be, uh, two votes under Article twelve.
Yep.
And, uh, will pass over Article thirteen and, and no motion will be offered.
Exactly. Exactly.
Very good.
Right.
Which brings us to Article fourteen, which is to transfer the care and custody of lot one oh seven A at the Nagog Hill Orchard to the Conservation Commission. And I know that this came up, uh, uh, in the fall or, or almost came to the floor of town meeting and there were some last minute, uh, stumbling blocks there. But, uh, I understand that now there's agreement on this, Jim, and, and, uh, we're going to go forward with it.
Exactly. Uh, exactly. Conservation Commission and, uh, has, has, has vetted it thoroughly, uh, and talked to the, the select board and would like to, uh, present and move forward, uh, on May sixth.
Hi, my name is Tim Pearson. I'm the conservation agent here in Littleton, uh, here to talk to you about Article fourteen, which is to transfer the care, custody, and control of a seven point nine acre part of, uh, ninety-four Nagog Hill Road from the select board to the Conservation Commission for recreational and conservation purposes. Thank you.
We now come to Articles fifteen, sixteen, and seventeen, a series of three proposed zoning amendment articles. And, uh, rather than, uh, do a poor job explaining them, they were going to have the town planner, Maran Twohill, do that for us, Jim.
Exactly. That's, that, that would be, that would be ideal.
Hello, Littleton. I am Maran Twohill, the town planner. Article fifteen is a zoning bylaw amendment proposed by the planning board as part of a three-step process to reduce the number of new marijuana cultivation facilities. Step one, fall twenty twenty-four town meeting approved a reduction in the number of adult use marijuana cultivation facilities that could be approved by the planning board to the minimum number under state law without a ballot vote. Step two is Article fifteen. Step three is the ballot question on May tenth, twenty twenty-five town election ballot. Passage of Article fifteen by the necessary two-thirds vote plus passage of the ballot question would prohibit the operation of marijuana cultivators and marijuana craft cooperatives, as well as preclude cultivation by marijuana microbusinesses. All three steps are needed. The planning board is proposing this marijuana zoning bylaw amendment in response to concerns raised by Littleton residents regarding the commercial cultivation of marijuana. Littleton zoning currently allows one of each type of marijuana cultivation facilities, three types of adult use cultivators, and one medical marijuana cultivator. Article fifteen would reduce the number of new adult use marijuana cultivation facilities that could be allowed in town to zero. The town already has limited the number of medical marijuana cultivation facilities to the minimum allowed by state law, one, given our current population. The existing cultivator in town would continue to operate. There is no change proposed to the bylaw regarding marijuana retail facilities. Article fifteen includes three actions. Action one amends section one seventy-three dash one nine seven B to delete marijuana cultivator and craft marijuana crop cooperative from permissible uses and renumbers the allowed uses. Action two amends the title of section one seventy-three dash one nine eight from limitations to limitations and prohibit, excuse me, limitations and prohibition on use. Action three amends section one seven three dash one nine eight, subparts D through F, to prohibit adult use marijuana cultivation in town. The planning board held a public hearing on this proposed zoning bylaw amendment on Thursday, March thirteenth, twenty twenty-five, and voted unanimously to recommend it to town meeting. This article was discussed at several planning board meetings and the select board meeting of March twenty-fourth. Additional details are posted on the town website. As with all planning questions, please reach out to me or any of the planning board members with your questions. Article sixteen is another zoning bylaw amendment proposed by the planning board regarding marijuana cultivation. It clarifies the special permit requirements for odor control and air quality for medical marijuana cultivation. This amendment would add Marijuana Treatment Center, or MTC, to the requirement for best available control technology for emissions and odor from marijuana cultivation facilities. The change proposed is to insert MTC in sections one seventy-three dash twenty, J two, and J three, as shown on the slide and as printed in the town meeting warrant. The planning board held a public hearing on this proposed zoning bylaw amendment on March thirteenth, twenty twenty-five, and voted to recommend it to town meeting. Additional public discussions were held at various planning board and select board meetings, and detailed information is available linked to the planning board page of the town website. Thank you for the opportunity to present information on Article seventeen, the proposed zoning bylaw updates to our floodplain regulations. My name is Maran Twohill. I am the town planner. The Federal Emergency Management Agency, FEMA, has adopted new flood insurance rate map panels and associated flood insurance study for Littleton. Article seventeen updates our floodplain zoning bylaw to reference the new maps and to meet current FEMA floodplain bylaw standards. Replacing the outdated zoning bylaw regarding wetlands and floodplain regulations will continue to make available the National Flood Insurance Program for those Littleton residents who choose to participate. Article seventeen would also remove references to wetlands, which are fully covered in Town Code, Chapter one seven one, Wetlands Protection administered by the Conservation Commission. The purpose of the floodplain regulation is to ensure public safety, eliminate hazards, support utility services, and reduce damage caused by flooding by regulating the placement of structures in and alterations to floodplain areas in Littleton. The article would delete the existing zoning bylaw, Article sixteen, Wetlands and Floodplain Regulations, in its entirety and replace it with the new Article sixteen Floodplain Regulation Bylaw as printed in the town meeting warrant. All wording is carefully crafted to meet FEMA requirements and has been reviewed and approved by the MIMA Floodplain Coordinator. The new FEMA flood insurance rate map panels are published by FEMA. There is no local procedure to amend the maps. That authority and procedure remains with FEMA and MIMA. The planning board and staff highly recommend that no amendments to the proposed article be made to ensure that the adopted bylaw meets strict FEMA guidelines. Details on each section of the proposed bylaw is contained in the text of the bylaw printed in the town meeting warrant and in our executive summary linked to the planning board page of the town website. The town has made available the new FEMA flood insurance rate map panels through our website, in the planning department, in the town clerk's office. Littleton's GIS, the town's online mapping, includes the new electronic FEMA floodplain map layer. The FEMA website offers several different ways to view the maps. Instructions are on both the FEMA website and the town website. Planning staff reached out to the town's Department of Public Safety, Health, and Utility Departments. All departments responded. No issues or concerns were raised, and the departments offered support for the proposal. In addition, we coordinated with the Conservation Department early in this process, and they agreed that there is no concern with removing this reference to wetlands bylaws from the zoning bylaw. The planning board voted unanimously to recommend this article. The planning board held a public hearing on this proposed zoning bylaw amendment on Thursday, March thirteenth, twenty twenty-five. This article was discussed at several planning board meetings and the select board meeting of March twenty-fourth. As with all planning questions, please out, reach out to me or any of the planning board members with your questions. Thank you.
Hi, my name is Michelle Viberd, and I'm the Human Resources Director with the town. Article eighteen is to see if the town will vote to amend the classification and compensation plans contained in the Personnel Bylaw, Chapter thirty-three of the Town Code, as recommended by the Select Board and the Personnel Advisory Committee. Effective July one, twenty twenty-five, the town is proposing a two and a half percent increase for all employees classified under the following classification and compensation plans. Schedule A, permanent full and part-time employees. Schedule B, Schedule B one, other employees. Schedule B two, temporary seasonal employees. And Schedule D, Fire Department on-call employees, as printed in the May sixth, twenty twenty-five town meeting warrant.
Next up will be Article twenty, which is to authorize transfer of funds from the capital stabilization fund to purchase and equip a new fire engine. And, uh, the reason that this is not proposed as a consented agenda article is because we're spending money from a stabilization fund for a special purpose. Normally, uh, when we add monies to, make a deposit, if you will, to a stabilization fund, that's not deemed to be controversial and that we're putting money in to the fund. When we go to take the money out, we want the voters to weigh in on whether the purpose is, uh, is a legitimate one or, you know, an appropriate one, and that's why, uh, this article comes before us. Anything you'd like to highlight here, Jim?
I would, I would. Thank you very, very much. So what we have here, we, originally there was, with the, with the fire engines, specifically, I believe it's, uh, engine one, there was an article back in twenty twenty-four, uh, for the restoration, uh, there was an appropriation for the restoration of, 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 of the engine. Unfortunately, a reevaluation of the engine, uh, has deemed that, uh, the most economical thing to do is to, is to purchase a new, is, purchase a new engine. And so it would be a, a request to appropriate one point three million dollars from the capital stabilization fund. And this is, and, you know, as you know, Tim, this is, these purchases are, are, are planned well in advance. And I know that, that in twenty twenty-four, the, we're just trying to kick it out a little further, uh, but it was, it's been on the capital improvement, capital stabilization plan, uh, for a few years in looking forward to, to making that replacement. And so we just want to move forward. And the, and what a challenging thing here is beyond the one point three million dollars is the timing when, when it will be ready, when the vehicle will be ready and actually delivered. We're probably two or three years out before that is, that is the case, according to the schedules that the chief is, uh, has expressed, uh, to me many a time, the timing is, is going to be a concern. So it's, uh, it's important that, uh, we continue to support, uh, uh, public safety and all our town employees that require the equipment to make sure that they have the, the appropriate equipment to, to do the job that they, uh, they need to do to be successful.
Okay. Very good. Articles twenty-one through twenty-five are various financial articles, uh, mostly moving funds into various special purpose stabilization funds. They're proposed for the consent agenda. Any, anything, uh, with respect to twenty-one through twenty-five you'd like to highlight, Jim? Or they're, they're pretty routine. I guess they, they come up annually or.
Exactly.
Or a couple of times, uh, you know, they've come up in the past.
Yep. Yep. This is a standard fare. Yep.
And another reminder, as, as you know, anything that's on the consent agenda is just, you know, the moderator's, uh, supposition that these can pass without controversy or without debate. If a voter wants to debate any particular item on the consent agenda, they just need to put a hold on it. And, uh, we, we will, uh, adjust the article as we normally would. So it's not like it's a slam dunk and you can't have input. You certainly can. I mean, we have quite a few articles proposed to go that way at this town meeting, but that doesn't mean you can't stop the train before it leaves the station.
And it's, I mean, it's beyond, uh, you know, Tim, it's in, uh, you, from the points you've made in the past, also, it's beyond even challenging the article. It's even a clarification of, of, of any points that someone may have and not understand something and just.
It could be a quick question.
Exactly. That's it.
And we're happy, happy to do that.
Yep.
Happy to do that. And if we can bundle the routine articles, it saves time for the more weighty articles, the ones that people really want to come and talk about. And I think we know, uh, what, what those might be.
Right.
And then I guess Article twenty-six, the, uh, twenty twenty-six Community Preservation Budget. Jim, would you like to tell us what's in that?
It's a, uh, it's really a, a tremendous, uh, uh, committee, the Community Preservation, uh, Committee, and they look at, uh, a few different areas. They look at historic preservation. They look at affordable housing, recreation, and open space, uh, uh, areas to invest, invest money. And for this year, there's going to be, uh, quite a few investments, uh, within the community. And if it's okay with you, I'll just highlight some of those.
Sure.
We've got, um, twelve thousand dollars from the historic reserves for the Houghton Memorial Building dual restoration. Ninety, nine thousand nine hundred and fifty dollars from the historic reserves for the West Lawn Cemetery gravestone preservation. Three thousand nine hundred and ten dollars from the historic reserves for Whitcomb seventeen thirty-nine commission restoration. Uh, one thousand one hundred and twenty-eight from the historic reserves for consultant for twelve Robinson Road preservation. Seventy-five hundred dollars from historic reserves for Nagog Hill Orchard Preservation Consultant. Seventy-five hundred dollars from historic reserves for Durkey Farmhouse Preservation Consultant. Eighty thousand dollars from the open space reserve for Clean Lakes Ecological Harvesting at Lake Madawak.
Madawak.
Thank you. It's one of those words I can't pronounce yet, just yet.
Well, it's Forge Pond in Westford, so you can always.
Okay.
Say Forge Pond.
Fair enough. Thirty thousand dollars from open space, uh, for Long Lake Frog Pond invasive plant control. Thirty thousand dollars from recreation reserve for spec pond launch engineering study. Fifteen thousand dollars from recreation reserve for the replacement of Long Lake Dock. Hundred and six thousand dollars from community housing reserves to the Littleton Affordable Housing Trust Rental Assistant Assistance Program. And eighty-eight thousand eight hundred dollars from undesignedated fund for the walkway improvements at Long Lake Frog Pond. So real, really some, uh, real important projects, uh, the community has invested in. Very impressive.
Very good. Then moving on, Articles twenty-seven and twenty-eight would authorize new revolving funds, particularly, uh, I think three new funds within the Department of Elder and Human Services. Uh, do you want to explain those, Jim?
Right. Right. And those funds, uh, really as, because we've got a, a, a breathtaking new, uh, the center on Shattuck Street. And what we want to be able to do is there'll be different areas, uh, that, uh, people will, uh, will be paying, let's say if there's, there's going to be an extensive, uh, uh, coffee bar there and thing, and things of that. So we're, we would like to identify the different areas that, uh, revenue will be coming into, into the, uh, uh, EHS. the EHS and be able to have a specific account going in that it can go into instead of just going into the into the general fund. So we want to look at that. That's why we're separating those out.
Very good. And we also were creating a new revolving fund for Long Lake. I don't think that will be controversial. I think that could be handled on the consent agenda
Yep.
as well. Also, a Clean Lakes Committee Maintenance Needs article, not specifically a revolving fund, but it is an appropriation. Again, I don't deem it to be controversial, and we probably can handle that easily as well.
Yeah. And it's something that it's, we, the Clean Lakes and the Select Board made it very clear that we need to do the, we need to start investing and as much as CPC and LELWD is very generous to support the Clean Lakes Committee and their their activities, it's also an area that the Select Board felt that we should be proactive in helping out and making that contribution, and that is just one of the areas that we are helping in. We're utilizing some free cash of $15,000 towards whatever the Clean Lakes Committee feel is appropriate for the maintenance of the town water bodies.
Very good. And then that brings us to Article 30, amending certain articles from prior town meetings for the benefit of the Town Sewer Project.
Right.
And that's proposed to go on the consent agenda. Again, we're just kind of tweaking the purpose of prior town meeting votes, projects that are that may have already been completed or for which the money is no longer
Right.
necessary. So that's Article 30. Article 31 is to fund collective bargaining agreements, and Jim, I understand this article may not be needed?
Exactly. It's something that unfortunately what we're, we've reached an agreement that we have already been absorbed, the collective bargaining agreements for for most of our unions, but unfortunately, there's one one union that we still need to settle, and we continue to pursue that, and we have not been successful with settling that contract at for town meeting. We don't feel that that's going to be the case. So unfortunately, that's an area that we're going to have to maybe look at again in November.
Okay. So there'll be no motion offered on Article 31 to fund collective bargaining agreements. And just to review, there'd be no motion offered on Article 2, bills of prior years, and Article 13.
Right.
The to authorize the special legislation for
No, that's the surplus.
Oh, I'm sorry.
13. Right.
13, yeah. The, you'll recall with the, Jim explained, there's going to be two motions offered under Article 12.
Right.
And then no motion under Article 13.
Right.
So of the 33, we've got three that we know are going to be passed over, no motion offered, so we're down to 30. And if the 20 or so proposed for the consent agenda pass, then we've got the rest of the night to consider the 10 articles that people really came to talk about. So that
Yep.
could be a better use of our time, certainly. Then we'll go to Article 32, Proposed Salary Stabilization Fund. Jim, do you want to describe that?
Yeah, that is that is something that I know the town has has done this in the past. It is the necessary funding, anticipated funding for the class and comp study for the town employees, and that is a tremendous tool that the town has regularly reinvested in examining the ability to attract talented professionals and experienced professionals and also retaining those people, because the staff that here is absolutely fantastic, and we want to make sure that we stay competitive to other communities and within the industry that they're that they're in. So we want to, that's one of the, you know, a big component that we're, that Select Board has been very vocal and supportive on for many years, and this is something that was scheduled to happen this year on that regular review.
Very good. And Article 33, the last article on the warrant, is a pretty comprehensive amendment to the Town Personnel Bylaw. Anything you want to say by introduction to that? And I know we're going to hear from the HR Director.
Yeah. Michelle Vibert has done, the HR Director, she has worked tirelessly on on identifying and making sure that what's being proposed are fair and equitable and balanced and really really a tremendous effort, as I've witnessed over the many months that she has, that this is one of the things that HR has labored over. So good job, and she will, she'll be, she'll be coming up next to to help us explain this a little bit better.
Article 33 is to see if the town will vote to amend the Personnel Bylaw, Chapter 33 of the Town Code, as recommended by the Select Board and the Personnel Advisory Committee as set forth in the May 6, 2025 Town Meeting warrant. In 2021, there was a comprehensive revision of the existing Personnel Bylaw. At that time, some bylaw content was moved to a newly established handbook, and the Personnel Board was replaced with a Personnel Advisory Committee. Personnel bylaws should be reviewed and updated periodically to ensure compliance with laws and regulations, provide clarity and consistency, reflect best practices, and respond to changes in the workplace. We have conducted a review and determined the proposed bylaw amendments are necessary to organize language, consolidate concepts, clarify roles, address current recruitment and retention needs, and prepare for adoption of a new classification and compensation plan. Thank you.
Thank you, Michelle. And that, that's it, basically. That's the warrant, the 33 articles that we ran through pretty quickly, but we think that a lot of them, as we said, are routine, and we think we can handle those with some dispatch, and the ones that require more debate, more information, we'll have the balance of the night to to spend on those. And once again, Town Meeting is Tuesday, May the 6th, at 7:00 PM at the Charles K. Gymnasium at the Littleton Middle School. I guess we should also mention, Jim, or you can mention, the school department has a presentation earlier.
They do. Well, we start at 5:15, there's going to be the joint, there's going to be a joint meeting of the of the Select Board and the Finance Committee, just to review if there's any other, anything else that needs to be discussed in the library. I believe it's on the second floor. And then at 6, promptly at 6 o'clock, go down to the cafeteria where there will be the architects and designers and the Permanent Building Committee, the school administration, and the team that will provide an update on the presentation on the Shekelane Project and answer any questions that people may have, which should go to about 6:50, and everyone, we can all just walk down the hall down to the gymnasium and enjoy Town Meeting.
Very good. So once again, please bring with you that night your Town Meeting report, if you have a chance to study that. Ahead of Town Meeting, it's got lots of valuable information, particularly fiscal information from the Finance Committee and others, and also kind of explanations in plain English what the various motions contemplate. You know, sometimes it's not so easy to understand or to guess what the purpose of an article is, and we've tried to provide explanations in there. And as always, Town Meeting information will be posted on the Town website. We'll endeavor to get the consent agenda articles posted as well so that people know what they will be in advance, and I know that we've heard that people like to know that in advance and not catch up on the fly at Town Meeting, and we'll do our best to do that. If any of the proposed motions change between now and then, Jim's office provides an updated motion handout for Town Meeting.
Right.
So that nobody will be sort of behind the times as far as what the current motion is, what's going to be offered that night on the floor of Town Meeting. So between that update sheet and your Town Meeting report, you should have everything you need, you know, for to be prepared for Town Meeting and to make your best, your best judgment on the articles. As always, if you've got questions, you can contact the Town Offices, and
Yep.
I'm sure the Town Clerk would be happy to field questions as well as Jim's office.
Right.
I'm available as well if people have questions about procedure at the Town Meeting. And we hope that you at least stuck with us for a few minutes here. I know it's not always the most interesting stuff, but it's it's important stuff, and it's the necessary business of the town, so we do take it seriously. And once again, for Jim Doggett and myself, thanks for joining us.
Thank you.